Welcome, everybody. The meeting is called to order here at six oh one, six o'clock. May I have a roll call?
Chairperson Philip Goldstein.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Marty Jost.
Here.
Commissioner Tom Wood.
Here.
Commissioner Wendy Newlin.
Commissioner Michael Lowry.
Alternate Commissioner Renzo Bianchi.
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Janelle Mines.
Here.
Very, very good. This is not necessarily an amendment to the agenda. I thought it, I thought it was. Anybody but our town attorney, we'd say something. I think, I think it bears saying, Tom and Wendy weren't here last time. The rest of the commissioners very graciously vote, voted Marty and me as vice chair and chair respectively for another term. I hope I'm speaking for Marty. I certainly appreciate it. I don't know. The vote might have been different. Marty, if, if Tom and Wendy had been here.
Not likely.
But they weren't. So we were reelected. I appreciate it. I also mentioned in a, in a somewhat in a pertinent content the night at council meeting when Janelle was approved by council. And Wendy and Tom and Michael Lowry, who's not here right now, had their terms extended. I said, I think we have the best team we've ever had, and that's not taking anything away from any commissioners that went before. But end to end, I think we have a great team, only getting better. So again, I appreciate trust you've placed in, in me and my colleague here as well. So moving on. Administrative determination of alternate voting. Assuming Michael doesn't show up, I think, because you both voted last time, correct? All right, Renzo, you'll vote this evening. And public comment, this is open public comment. This is an opportunity for anybody who wishes to speak on any item that is not on the agenda to be accommodated. There will be an opportunity for public comment on the two business items that remain on the agenda, correct? Staff, there will be public. So, but is there anybody that signed up or otherwise wishes to speak on an item not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, we'll, we will close the general public comment. Consent agenda consists only of the minutes from the April first, twenty twenty five meeting. Commissioners, any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Not, not.
Hearing none. Okay, staff, attorney, any, any questions with the minutes? All right, very good. With that, I need a motion, please, on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, consent agenda carries on a five oh vote. The business skipped right over. Number six, business. Move on to the business items that have public hearings. First one is natural medicine land use code amendment. Logan.
Okay, so most of you have seen and heard this presentation several times, so I'll try to fly through it. But so in Colorado, Proposition one twenty two was passed in November of twenty twenty two, decriminalizing the personal use possession and cultivation of certain plant-based psychedelic substances for adults twenty one and older. And this directed the creation of a regulated framework for supervised use. Legislation was then passed in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four, allowing licensed healing centers to administer these substances under professional supervision. So while local governments cannot prohibit these businesses, they can regulate their time, place, and manner under the zoning authority. And so that's what we're proposing today. Healing and cultivation centers. So some definitions. A healing center is a facility that is licensed to provide supervised administration of natural medicine to individuals. These centers are designed to offer a safe, safe environment for the therapeutic use of plant-based psychedelics under the guidance of trained professionals. A cultivation center is a licensed establishment where natural medicine products are cultivated, processed, and prepared for distribution. These facilities must comply with state regulations on security, inventory tracking, and safety standards. So in terms of regulating time, place, and manner, we first look at setbacks. And so to ensure compatibility with the community, setbacks can require natural medicine facilities to be located a certain distance from schools, daycares, and other childcare centers. And so several other Colorado communities have adopted a thousand-foot setback from schools and childcare facilities as a standard measure. And then in addition, you can do the same thing for residential property, and many communities have done that as well. So during our work session with you all in council, we went through several scenarios from least restrictive to most restrictive. Kind of becoming more restrictive in terms of the zoning districts that these would be able to operate in. And then playing around with the setbacks. And the guidance we received was to kind of start more restrictive. And so what we're proposing is limiting healing centers to the regional commercial zone only. And that's in green right there on the screen. And then employing the following setbacks, one thousand feet from schools and childcare facilities, and then a thousand feet from residential lots. And so that results in about three percent of the town being open to these types of uses. For cultivation centers, we did the same scenario. And again, the most restrictive, we were given the guidance to go more restrictive and employ those same setbacks, but then limit cultivation centers to only the industrial zone. And so that's in that teal color there, and that is about one percent of the town. And then in addition to that, in the draft code language, we also limited the operations of a natural medicine business to hours between seven AM and seven PM. And then there's other, other standard regulations that other communities have used. And so with that, the community development department recommends approval of the land use code amendment for natural medicine.
Is there anybody that wishes to offer any public comment on business item seven A, natural medicine land use code amendment? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public comment. Commissioners, questions, comments?
Phil, I have one. I really appreciate what you've done with all this, particularly some of the clarifications you've put in the definition section. I did find one typo. Four point four point two nine point seven, you've got a two six instead of a two nine on that. But that was the only, only issue I had. Again, the definitions look great, and I'm in favor of passing as stand.
Other commissioners, questions? Renzo? My only concern, and you know, I defer to Tom, because this is an area, after talking, you can learn your background a little bit more that you're familiar with, is, is the processing of the materials and the disposal of whatever materials that are used to process it, not only, you know, processing and watering, but also the watering that, is there any concern that we have with regards to that?
I think that the processing statement, four point four point two nine point seven, goes through, discusses both non-hazardous as well as hazardous materials. The biggest issue with a mushroom farm is the ventilation from the grow area, because the spores can, can go out through the vents. Mold and other things can go out through the vents. Most places require heap filtration to minimize how much escapes the farm itself. From a standpoint of water, most of these, these growers have to use very little water, but they do wash down the, the area periodically, like once a month to flush it all out. Those, those materials are typically captured and disposed of properly.
And, and you, you called out the paragraph I was referring to, the, the one.
The, the processing is in point seven.
And you think that covers?
I do.
As well?
I do. I think that there's other land use codes associated with hazardous materials. Certainly, the fire department has review of, of most everything built from a fire standpoint, which includes hazardous materials. There's really nothing flammable, but there are some people that are very sensitive to mold, pollen, spores. There, there are certainly issues if, if mushrooms start growing around the, the outside of the farm and, and, you know, escape over the fence. But likely, it's, it's not going to happen. These are high-value products. They don't really want to spread them all around. So with proper agricultural controls, they should be fine.
Okay, thanks. Other?
Marty? I was just thinking, people might either be really happy or really enraged about that, about it, if it grows. Anyway, I have a question. The, this slide and the one before. Just wondering how all of that works. So if there's these setbacks, what happens if? So they can't build one of these within a thousand feet of residential school things? Does it go the other way as well, that it doesn't prevent somebody from like building a house within a thousand feet?
I don't believe it goes the other way. So if, if the use is there first, and then residential areas want to develop closer, I think they can. So the prohibition isn't on the residential development. It's more on the placement of these facilities when there's existing residential development.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the example given, if there was an oil well, and you decide to build your house closer than so many feet from an existing oil well, that's kind of on you.
Yeah.
If the oil well was there first. Same thing if there was a, an industrial facility and you decided to move in across the street.
Okay, and then like this one with this area circle, this industrial is is kind of, that's not a thousand feet from the residential neighborhood that's in the county, is it?
Well, this would just be setbacks within our town limits.
But it's, it's not.
Of what we mapped.
So if it's, they build, say fifty feet from a subdivision that's in the county, that's allowed?
That's Homestead Estates, I believe, isn't it? It's, we've, that's north of this area.
Okay, so there, it is adjacent to county residential. We didn't map on this any unincorporated residential. So this could maybe be further limited.
Okay, it's just, to me, it doesn't matter if, if it's in the county or in the town. You know, good neighbors are good neighbors, and we should protect them.
Yeah, because the, the language is, a building containing a natural medicine business shall not be located within one thousand feet of a lot parcel attract where a residential use exists or is a principal allowed use in the land use code. So really, I mean, we don't distinguish between unincorporated and incorporated.
But that would, that would limit this area, I would think, too.
Yeah.
No current area.
Yeah, I think the only place it would work would be kind of the southwest corner of that industrial parcel. That might be a thousand feet away from the, the houses just across the canal.
Is that correct? Carolyn, do you want to weigh in on this?
Yeah, I think I, I read it the same way as Logan does, is that the setback would include properties that would be residential outside of the boundaries of the town. So we probably need to revise that map and then determine how much property would be available, if that's the interpretation. So, yeah.
I thought when we went through the work session, if not the public comment session on that Wednesday, I thought there was a second industrial zone already zoned or potentially that this could be allowed.
So if you see kind of in the, where my cursor is.
Oh, yeah.
There's a tiny little sliver.
I'll be on.
Of industrial.
That's on Three Bell, the Mills landscaping property.
Yes, that, our Mill Brothers.
Yep.
But even that is going to have residential across the trail from it.
Not built yet.
Yeah. Okay, could you go one slide up, please? One more, the other, yeah, that. So the circle area there is where one of these would be allowed to be, right? But even that would be somewhat limited because there's residential plan for in there?
Mm-hmm, yes. Correct.
So it's probably really, if you look at it, it's probably one percent or less?
I'd say less than one percent.
Less than one percent.
But I think we're, we're meeting the intent of the law. We're not banning it outright. There's still a possible theoretical place that could happen.
Yeah.
And if you have somebody that's got a lot of money, they could buy up the area around it, right?
Where exactly is that?
That's Lidera.
That's Lidera and Gateway North.
All right.
Do I understand we're, everything we're doing, we consider within the bounds of the reasonable? The, the term reasonable in terms of the state.
That is correct.
Yeah, that's a requirement that any land use terms and conditions as to time, place, and manner must be reasonable.
Yeah, I just, yes, and I just, yeah, my question was, we're deeming that, everything we're doing, to be reasonable. It wasn't a trick question. I just.
Yeah, I think for industrial, it would be helpful for us to recalculate the amount of property that would be available with that setback. You could certainly take out the, as a determining condition, as a condition of approval, you could recommend that we take out the thousand-foot residential setback, if you'd like.
Which then brings us to the Walker Manufacturing, which hosts, I know this is far-fetched, and I realize that's still county pending annexation. They host a, a church. I don't know if they host a daycare associated with the church or not, but that would then mean the same thing.
There is a definition of daycare under the state statute. Let me pull that up. I do not believe it would apply to just a temper, you know, for just during masses or something. I would say we'd have to look at it, but it depends on whether that daycare was, you know, more daily daycare, but we, I can pull up that definition as you're talking.
But we, we also need to.
And I used, and it, and actually says childcare is why I brought that up, which, again, not likely, but.
We should also remember that this is a snapshot in time, that Timmouth is growing, and we can annex more area into the town and zone that regional commercial and industrial, and so that will change the amount.
Sure.
Yeah, because there's up, it could also be Mulberry and Latham. Isn't that annexed in?
That was, was that the site that was considered for the community center? Not, not strongly considered, but I, I'm not sure. I thought it was out that way.
Town, town does own some property up in that area.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's currently zoned, open space, I believe, in the comprehensive plan, and, yeah.
Okay.
One other thing to Tom and Renzo's joint concerns, there would, am I correct? There might be other circumstances where we would get, if a business came another crack at this, if you will, it would be, could be a site plan, could it not? Probably, probably not the therapeutic center, but the, the grow center could be and another opportunity to address these concerns with, with the safety that you pointed out. Yes, okay. Lastly, I attended the, the open forum. I just said, we, it doesn't appear that any of the very few questions that were raised, which were, and a couple of them were not within our purview necessarily. The only one that was, was the hours that was defensible. We're sticking with seven to seven, correct?
Yeah, and there's a language. Unless the participant is unable to leave the premises due to an adverse health event, and so that kind of gives the facility some leeway. If, if that person's not ready to go back into the world, they can continue to be on site.
The issue raised at that forum was you're closing at seven and they're not capable of driving. But I, that's a good, yeah, that, that, that helps immensely. Okay, commissioners, any further questions or comments on this? Carolyn mentioned that we could proceed without the residential in there pending the, the recalculation. And personally, I, I think the residential should stay in there if we're going to put a, a condition on it. It's just to do that recalculation, but to leave the residential in there, is my, my input. You're, you're talking about that even if, if it's out in the county, it would be certainly the, the prudent neighborly thing to do to honor that as though those were, that was part of the town.
Yeah, I agree.
So, okay, I, Carolyn, we don't need a, do we don't need a condition on this, do we? What, what's the, do we need to amend the motion at all?
It's, no, it sounds like you're not asking for any change in the proposed language. And so before staff makes the presentation to council, we can go back and recalculate what that percentage would be, and then make a presentation to them as to whether, you know, there's a recommended change or whether we keep the thousand-foot setback.
Very good.
But I, I guess just to clarify, though, that it's not an assumption that the, now, you know, like county residential is covered, it's, it's for sure that that's covered in the existing language?
Yes.
Okay.
So, yep, another avenue would be to be really explicit and say residential within town jurisdiction, so we could exclude the county residential property. That would be another way, but.
Well, we don't want to exclude it, right?
Okay.
Correct. I think the wording just says thousand-foot setback from residential lots. It doesn't say Timmouth. It doesn't say county. So I think the wording is probably okay.
We also have the, on the off chance they're, they're, they're watching, we, it's been a couple, three years now since Homestead Estates, some of those folks showed up and both at a, at an open forum and also a couple of meetings. We gave them assurances only to the extent that, at the time, we said, although we, we can't assert back then that, that we'd still be here whenever anything went into that industrial zone. But we did, we did make some modifications. zone, but we did, we did make some modifications at that time. I don't know, Tom, you were still, you were here, Marty was certainly here, to the setbacks. And we gave them assurance that we felt if we were still here and to the extent that staff honored that obligation, we would do whatever we could to see that, that that was carried forward. So again, there were no guarantees, nothing was written, but it was one of those occasions where neighbors who expected it always to be open space at least went away reasonably happy, wouldn't you say? They were very, very grateful.
Generous buffers and.
Yes. We did. So anyway, for whatever that's worth, Carolyn.
I will note that the proposed amendment allows for these uses, but they are still always permitted with conditions or conditional use. So in addition to just a site plan, there's actually a conditional use process that they'd be going through that would allow for mitigating of any impact at that time.
No, not, it's not a conditional use. They're just permitted with conditions, and these standards are the conditions for that use. But at the site plan, you are able to add conditions to make sure it's safe and secure.
All right, so we're covered one way or the other. You're good, I'm good with that. Unless there's any other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion on business item, public hearing, business item 7A, Natural Medicine Land Use Code Amendment.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Natural Medicine Land Use Code Amendment, as stated.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Posed. 7A carries on a 5-0 vote. Thank you. 7B, Design Standards Land Use Code Amendment. This is yours, Troy, I understand.
So we saw you last month here and talked about this, and we're back based on the input that you gave us last month. So the main change since last month is we added some administrative ability for the planning director to give an alternative compliance when there's good rationale for deviating from these new standards on these design standards that we're presenting. But just to back up, there's a table 5.3 in the Land Use Code that is design standards, and it covers a lot of things. And so there's a subsection of that table, 5.3.4, which is specific to building form and materials. And there's four subsections in that. And design detail and block diversity are the two of the four subsections of that that we've sort of identified as needing a little refinement. Started out, we were just thinking about residential, and specifically, we were thinking about block diversity. And as we got into it and analyzing it, it occurred to us, well, there's some gaps in the design detail for not just residential, but for also commercial. We weren't thinking of any developments in particular. We were just saying citywide into the future, what should the code say about some of these, these things? And so, you know, we talked to you last, last month about what are the must haves? And where do we want the flexibility to lie? And just to kind of briefly go through what we talked about last month, form is one of the standards that we're not really changing, other than we're adding a definition of, let's see, of what architectural style means. And that's referred to in the form section and also in the material section. Those two sections stay the same. And then the third and the fourth section are the design detail and the block diversity. And I just wanted to briefly go through what the design detail section, what we're changing. So what you're seeing on the colored diagonal is what the current code shows, and we're really going through a couple of things. We're defining what a facade is and what a primary facade is. We're adding a couple of subsections to the design detail so that we're differentiating a few things about whether it's a residential up to six units or whether it's six units or more and non-residential. So there's kind of two, two design standards that we're kind of refining. And then, like I said, we've added this section about that the director can, can add some discretion to some interpretations of what should and shouldn't happen when we're applying these standards. And so I just want to get it into just a little bit. We've got the commercial and six units or more on the left side of the screen here and the residential, six units or less on the right side. And like I said, that's where we started, was the residential, six units or fewer. But as we got to looking at it, it seemed like we had a few gaps in our code. And we asked you last month, do you want us to, you know, address these? Or do you want, are we going too far? Are we not going far enough? What do you guys want? And I think we got a clear message that you liked what we were, our draft was from last month about that, so long as the director had some discretion to say, yeah, here's a good plan, an alternative compliance that makes sense and give them, you know, give the director the authority to make some decisions as we go through that. But we can come back to this if you'd like. We talked about it last month. These are this kind of the same standards that would, you know, be refined. And then block diversity is kind of the, where we started off with this. But we've, you know, we've got more clarity on how garages are going to be treated. We've got more clarity on the same model variety not being repeated on the same side of the street. We've added some things about massing, that word fenestration as windows and doors, the openings in a building, and there's a little more clarity on that. Paint color diversity, we're adding a little more requirements on that. And again, this also goes back to the planning director to be able to apply some discretion on alternative compliance. And we did look at the Loveland Unified Development Code, the Firestone Development Code, and the Four Columns Land Development Code to kind of give us some ideas on this. Firestone had a lot more relevant examples. Their community is a lot closer to kind of our scenario. And it seems like frankly, they had, they had thought it through a lot more than the other two jurisdictions. So we borrowed some stuff from all three, but probably more from Firestone. And with that, that's really kind of the, where we are back tonight in front of you is to kind of take your feedback from last time, and we would recommend these revisions to the Land Use Code based on your feedback from last time and integrating those changes.
All of our screens just went out. Is that?
Well, I think it was, I just, I progressed after the last slide.
In case anybody wanted to circle back. Okay. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment, Lindsay or otherwise wish to speak?
We don't have anyone signed up.
Do, but I understand.
For public comment? I'm sorry.
That's what I understood, so.
We have.
By all means, if you.
William Welch and Tony.
Yeah, if you could, of course, we're familiar with you, but state your name and address, and we'll give you three minutes, please. Turn your mic on. It's, there's a little graphic of a person speaking. There you go. Okay, all right, now the clock starts.
William Welch, 7785 Highland Meadows Parkway, Windsor. I am the, I am a project manager contracted to Connell LLC on the Ladera project. And y'all have in front of you a letter that was written by Brownstein, and I drew the short straw, so I get to read you the letter. So the, we submit this letter on behalf of Connell LLC, a longtime property owner of the town of Timneth, and the developer of the 240-acre mixed-use community known as Ladera, located at the southeast corner of I-25 and Harmony Road, to provide feedback on the proposed amendments to design standards in Article 2, Chapter 9, Table 5343 of the Land Use Code, the zoning amendment. The zoning amendment is set to be reviewed during the Town Planning Commission meeting tonight. Connell understands the town's desire to make revisions to its regulations from time to time to address changing community needs. However, Connell has the following concerns with the proposed zoning amendment. First, the process by which the zoning amendment and other recently proposed amendments to the Land Use Code have been introduced reflects a concerning lack of transparency from the town. This zoning amendment includes substantive changes to the, that affect landowners throughout the town, but no notice was provided to landowners, no open house held, nor was there any public comment period, aside from the upcoming planning commission meeting. No effort was made to discuss these changes with stakeholder property owners. This lack of transparency has caused grave concern with Connell and other property owners and developers within the town. Connell therefore urges the town, first and foremost, to engage in a more transparent process and gain meaningful feedback from stakeholders before holding hearings on proposed amendments to the Land Use Code. Connell additionally requests that a planning commission determination on the zoning amendments be tabled until additional outreach and meetings can be held with Connell and other interested stakeholders. Second, the zoning amendment staff report from Terry Jones, sorry, Troy, included in the April 15, 2025 Planning Commission packet is misleading. The summary section of the staff report references residential design standards only. However, the zoning amendment reflects residential, business, commercial, retail, institutional, civic, and public buildings. The summary reference to only residential design standards may have resulted in members of the public missing important information affecting commercial, retail, institutional, and other types of development. Third, it is unclear how the zoning amendment would affect existing planned developments. For example, the Ladera Plan Development Overlay expressly states that projects in Ladera are exempt from the 30% glazing requirements of the Land Use Code, Table 5343C. However, the zoning amendment restructures the Land Use Code, Section 5343, to use an alternative numbering system, changing the Land Use Code, Table 5343C, to Land Use Code, Table 5343A3. The zoning amendment also expands the existing glazing requirements from applying to retail buildings only to applying to all business, commercial, retail, institutional, civic, and public buildings, and adds new requirements for design elements on multi-story buildings. Connell respectfully requests that the town clarify that the proposed zoning amendment does not apply to existing PDs like Ladera where such planned development, alternative zoning, and design standards. Fourth and finally, Connell respectfully requests clarification regarding the new added definition of facade primary. The zoning amendment defines facade primary as the facade of a building that faces a highway, a public street, a private street, a park, trail corridor, or open space. This definition would result in many buildings throughout the town, including all buildings within Ladera, having every face categorized as a primary facade. Since primary facades are subject to heightened design standards, it's unrealistic to apply such standards to every side of a building. Typical urban design best practices apply primary facade standards to one side of a building. Accordingly, Connell requests that the definition of facade primary be revised to the following. The facade of a building that faces a highway, a public street, a private street, a park, trail corridor, or open space, each individual building shall have only one primary facade. The selection of the primary facade shall be proposed by the applicant during the pre-application conference. Connell looked, actually, we actually look forward to working with the town. We enjoy working with the town. Connell wants to work with the town to help craft regulations that any, that the Land Use Code revisions do not inadvertently create negative impacts to existing and future development of the town. We respectfully request that the town, one, revise the zoning amendment and provide clarifications regarding PDs as requested. Two, table a commission determination on the zoning amendment until additional outreach and meetings can be held with Connell and other interested stakeholders. And three, engage any more transparent process for future amendments to the Land Use Code that better notifies landowners of such changes and provides meaningful feedback from engaged stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys for reading to you.
Staff, now I'm going to lob it back over to you. Oh, we have another, okay, and please limit your comments to three minutes. I wanted those last ones to be limited, but we're happy you got your letter on the record in addition to providing it to us.
So my name's Tony Connell. I'm a partner in Ladera, and I just want to give you a couple of quick things. We're very lucky to have this public-private partnership with the town of Timneth. We're really excited that, to move forward. But in my perspective, you know, we started this in 2019, and just to let you know how the process goes, we really have only gotten three approvals to date in 2025. We're very excited about the future, but the PD overlay is a tool that we feel important, and we really want to make sure it goes forward and is the best for both parties. The PD overlay really, you guys see it when you see a site plan and architectural mockups. It takes that three to five years to really get to that point. So having some certainty and having our PD overlay that we can show people and move them forward to make multimillion-dollar investments is a great tool. So it should be a partnership, and it shouldn't just wait because too many buyers are going to look, well, it's going to be the manager's decision or the planning director's decision and discretion. We don't want to get to that point because they may not make that investment, probably not likely. Just a couple of quick points about, you know, the importance of Ladera and that commercial, regional, commercial zoning is this year's Timneth budget's $30 million plus or minus. Ladera buildout is going to be $14 million of revenues with $3 million of costs, so a net of $11 million to the town. So we are intertwined, and we are looking for that. The regional commercial zoning is to capture Four Columns Loveland SMA, the Greeley Well SMA, which is roughly 750,000 people. That's why it's regional, and we're trying to get those people, plus another 100,000 from rural areas in Cheyenne. So that's the market that's going to be coming here, and that's the ones that we need to serve, and we look forward to doing that in a very partnership way. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Anybody else from the Ladera team wish to speak? Anybody else wish to offer any public comment? All right, with that closed public comment, circle back to staff here. Please, if you would, respond. You, I know we're getting this letter late. We have, we're very much aware. We have another letter, another business item that would have been on tonight that you took exception to as well, which we did continue. But Troy and the rest of staff and our attorney, if you would, please comment on, to the extent that you can, on their points.
I think it might be useful for you all and just for the Ladera team as well, just to kind of back up and talk about the context a little bit of the PD overlay and what that, what exactly that is and what it's not. And I'll start, and I think Carolyn and Logan might chime in after I'm done giving it my first stab. But the PD overlay is basically, it was adopted a little over a year ago. I see the signatures on it, January 2024, so it's fairly, fairly recent. But it's got 33 items that if you look at our Land Use Code, and there's 33 sections specifically of our Land Use Code that they have, I guess, a variance, if you will, or I'm not sure if that's the right term, but it's in effect an alternative compliance that was approved for our current code language, that they comply alternatively, and they have replacement language for those 33 sections of code. And so there's six of. And so there's six of the code provisions in this section three point, or excuse me, 5.3.4 that I presented tonight, that they have their PD overlay, some alternative language on. Those are the ones that we didn't change in the, in the form section, 3.5.4.1 form. If you recall, I said, we were showing you this in context, but we didn't change the language of form. And additionally, in 3.5.4.2 materials, they have several sections within that 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 were modified within their PD overlay and then, and excuse me, the design detail, they had two sections that, one of which we didn't change the language other than to change the numbering, which was 5.3.4.3, design detail. What was B is now becoming two because of the numbering scheme. But the main one that that, and I know Will did mention this, that that is a little different in our language is this 3.5.4.3, what is, used to be C, which is now three, primary facades of retail buildings, and we striked the term retail and put it under the category of commercial buildings and institutional and well, basically, it's the, under business, commercial, retail, institutional, civic, public, and residential with six or with more than six dwelling units. So we've sort of categorized, like I said in my presentation, you've got the smaller scale residential and the larger scale commercial, including the larger scale residential. So we've added some language to one of those sections. Now, it's my understanding that, all things being equal, the PD overlay trumps whatever current code changes we are, if, you know, all things being equal, but Carolyn.
Yes, I'm gonna stop you right there.
Okay, great.
Okay, thanks. Okay, can we start, can we maybe take these like as a few questions? Let's start with the process. The same process was followed for this approval that is followed for any land use approval process, and it does provide a lot of opportunity for public comment, including the fact that the developers are here and are able to provide comment. So let's start with Logan. Can you just walk us through the opportunities for public input and the notice that was provided for this?
Each month, at the beginning of the month, we host a public input session, and we advertise that via the TWIT this week in Timneth, and then there's other blasts that go out. And then we also put that on our development biweekly emails. So that's one opportunity, and that's kind of the extra opportunity in addition to the ability to come and comment before you all. Yeah, and then this was advertised in the Colorado per the Land Use Code, so we followed all the notification processes.
So we heard from Planning Commission and Council that you wanted more opportunities for public input and actually added this additional review meeting where members of the public can come to that open house meeting and make comments, and that was held on April 2 this month? And I believe that representatives of Ladera were present?
Yes, and and those two amendments were natural medicine and the plan development districts, which you received one letter on. Last month, in March, we had had the public information meeting on the design details and block diversity.
And we also had another Planning Commission meeting where we had came to you and asked for feedback on this. So this is actually, at this point, there's been an open house, a meeting before Planning Commission to discuss the concepts, which is, you know, and get that feedback. It wasn't a work session, but it was like a work session where we presented and got feedback from you. This is now, we are taking it to you as a proposed amendment. And then what will be the next process?
After this, it would go before council, and there would be another opportunity for public comment. And then just to rewind, since you all were here, we did bring all of these Land Use Code amendments to you all to prioritize, and there were several meetings that we worked through that prioritization with you all.
Thank you. So that answers that first question about public process. Any additional questions for you on that process?
Yes, I, I'm not speaking for other commissioners. That seems to be, if that's the most pertinent issue raised here by Williams' letter and, or by the letter and Williams' delivery of that letter. I believe there's maybe some other issues, but certainly there seems to have been plenty of opportunity for comment on this. I would concur with that. So what other, other issues? Troy, Carolyn, Logan, teaming up here, addressing anything else in this, in this letter?
Well, they're gonna answer each of them. You're going to each, each of the points.
Okay, so I certainly can do so if you'd like me to do so. We don't typically go back point by point in responding to public comments, but in this case, with your request, we're definitely happy to do that.
Yes, it very much is, it was a request, yes.
Great. Okay, so the second one is the question. It says that the Planning Commission summary is confusing because it refers to residential design standards. Well, most of the standards are residential design, and the standards are attached. And so if anyone reviewed the standards, they would be seeing all of the detail. The staff report doesn't summarize all of the detail in the Land Use Code amendment. Troy, do you have anything else to add on that?
Well, just, I mean, looking at the, the staff report cover page, I mean, it, it says, "Design Standards, Land Use Code Amendment", is the title subject, doesn't necessarily, I mean, doesn't say it's residential or not residential. And then the description, the description says, "Design Standards, Land Use Code Amendment", so I guess I'm a little confused as to what the issue is, I guess.
Great. Okay, then the third item.
Well, wait, wait, just a moment, and we're not, we're not gonna go back and forth here necessarily.
Like I said, it started out as residential, but it evolved.
I'd like to know if there's any fire where there's appears to be smoke, at least as asserted by the applicant even though this is not a development proposal by the by the Ladera team here. So Carolyn, is there is, is there in fact any confusion? It does not appear there was intent to have any confusion, but.
There certainly was not intent to have confusion, and I think, I mean, you guys can review the amendment. Yeah, I, I think it talks about, it refers to the town's current residential design standards are intended to encourage visual interest in architectural variety across developments. However, staff found it be helpful to got more specific criteria regarding architectural elements to provide clarity to developers and promote increased facade variation within the blocks. The goal of this amendment is provide a clearer, more predictable framework that supports diverse engaging streetscapes while improving the overall review process. I think because the title says just design standards for Land Use Code Amendment, and then the draft code is attached, the one reference to residential, I don't think would would make someone not read further if they were a developer, as indicated by the fact that, you know, we've got some commercial developers that read this, so I did not believe that that was confusing.
Well, and clearly the developers are here, and so they heard about it at some point, so I guess the notification worked.
I would tend to agree. Again, I'm only speaking for myself. We're a little bit deviating from process normal, but different times call for different circumstances. Next point, please.
Thank you. So the next point is, is unclear how the zoning amendment would affect existing planned developments. And this would, these amendments would be applicable to planned developments. It would be reviewed on a case by case basis to determine whether a modification applied to a specific planned development. For example, in our Land Use Code, it is very clear that planned developments are overlays, they are not individual planned development district that would do away with the base zoning. So our Land Use Code is very clear that there's two types of zone districts. There's a base zoning and an overlay district, and that the base zoning will continue to apply. The requirements of the base zoning will continue to apply, except as modified by the overlay district. And you can look at Section 3.2.2, that makes that very clear. And it says, "The standards for the underlying district shall be in effect for any area additionally zoned for the overlay district." It also says that when there's a conflict between the requirements of the overlay and the underlying district, the standards of the overlay district will prevail. And I think that's where Troy was going, is when there is a conflict between the two provisions, the PD overlay will apply, but that doesn't prevent the town from changing any underlying requirements for the zoning. And so that's why, rather than speak as to the applica, as to how this applies to a particular development and a particular PD overlay, let's look at the policy that this would apply unless it conflicts with the PD, the PD overlay that was adopted. And so we would have to be looking at this at a case by case basis as to whether, you know, for instance, does the, you know, how does this affect the window requirement? And, you know, we can look at that, but generally, this, if it doesn't conflict, the new requirements would apply.
Last point, another point, hang on, we're gonna circle back to it.
Okay. The next point is a recommended change to the definition of facade primary, and I'd like Logan to talk to that because I believe that is something that was considered by staff.
So prior to that, I think the glazing was brought up that pri, previously it only applied to retail buildings, and now it applies to all buildings. So in a lot of codes, you have commercial sections, and they're broken out into small format, commercial, so more mixed use. Then you have different regulations for big box, and then you have regulations for your kind of standard commercial. In our code, it just, everything's sandwiched together. It doesn't really distinguish between like what type of commercial it is. And so the glazing, you know, we really didn't have glazing requirements for commercial in general. So we, we felt that was an error and wanted to, wanted to fix that. And so that's why that was modified. Any questions?
And I think the question, the other question was about whether there's one primary facade or there should be multiple primary facades.
Yes. So in most zoning codes I'm familiar with, and I've, I've worked in a lot of zoning codes, primary facade is a facade that faces like an open space area or a street, highway, similar to how we defined it. So you, you can have more than one primary facade on a building. And that means there just needs to be more enhancement, more articulation, because more people are gonna be seeing it. And so our code did not have definitions for facade or primary facade, and so we wanted to clarify that for the development community.
I believe we've covered the points, correct?
I believe we have.
Okay, so I want to give the commissioner, excuse me, give the commissioners an opportunity. Renzo, I know you're championing the bit there, so why don't you have at?
Yeah, no, that, that's great. Thanks. So first of all, I thought when we talked the last time that when these new codes go into effect, the people that were working under the existing codes, their grandfathered in, they're not affected by these new codes.
So, oh, if we have an application in the queue right now, so we're reviewing, let's say, a site plan, that site plan would be reviewed under our current regulations, not what's proposed. So whenever they came in, those are the regulations that'll be reviewed.
Okay, no, that's, that's good. And then now the PD overlay, I view the PD overlay as a contract between us and whoever had it. You mentioned that was in 2024. Regardless of what we change underneath and all that, shouldn't the PD overlay be the PD overlay? And not be concerned if something changed under it, that my PD overlay is still good?
There is no attempt to vacate the, any of the PD overlays by this. What, but the things adapt. For instance, the natural medicine provisions you just adopted were not contemplated because it was not of legal use. So every planned development district isn't gonna talk about whether it's a permitted use or not to have natural medicine. But the code needs to adopt, to adapt, it says to changing situations and changing law. And so if that natural medicine provision is adopted, then those requirements of the Land Use Code would apply to the underlying base districts. So if, if it was, if it was a permitted use in a regional commercial, and we add natural medicine as a permitted use with requirements, that would apply to even a regional commercial that has a PD overlay on it.
I, I got it. I understand that. You're getting the engineer out of me now. Because, you know, things are changing, understand requirements change and all that kind of stuff. But I did the PD overlay, and I said, I eliminated glazing. And now we're coming back and saying, we're gonna do 30% glazing. Shouldn't that PD overlay still stick and not require them to do that glazing?
So now we're getting into a very specific, you know, example.
Can I just chime in real quick? That particular standard is part of the PD overlay and, and what they, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's 33 things that they specifically had an alternative compliance on. That's one of them, so we can't change that on them.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Of those 33 things. But there's, there's a few other things that we're, we're adding that have nothing to do with those 33 things. And what she's saying, if I get you right, is things that weren't part of those 33 things that they got alternative compliance on are fair game to add new standards.
Totally agree. Totally agree with what you're saying. And the concern that came from the, from the community, which I would have the same concern if I were in their shoes, I guess, is I have a PD overlay, I'm getting my clients to come up on that PD overlay. We're sticking to that, and we want that partnership, right? Because you guys work very well with them and being invited to their architecture meetings and all that. And we want to have that going, but there's gotta be assurances that their existing PD overlay is still good. And I, what I'm hearing out of you all, their existing PD overlay is good regardless of what we do tonight.
On those 33 items.
When there's a conflict.
Fair game on, on other stuff. They, they didn't change that. Fair game. You're right. Rules can change. If those rules change, then so be it. But of those 33 items that I specifically felt in 2024, when that was signed, are still legit.
What's your next, next question? Okay, because I think we've, I think we've, we've covered that.
And if I could just clarify, there was a PDO amendment in 2024? That was not the date of the original approval, so that's why you're thinking, we didn't approve that a year ago. That was just the, the last amendment. That's why that was dated 2024.
Well, thank you. Thank you. That, good clarification.
All right, good points. Next. Marty.
Okay. So Table 5.3.4.2A. I'm not sure if I read that correctly or not. It's a metal, only an industrial. I'm assuming that means as a primary material, right? Because there's accents that are used in residential and.
Can you say that section again, just so I can?
Sorry, five, Table 5.3.4.2, Item A. I wrote it down correctly.
Right. Now, that's the existing language. And that's a good question. Should that say that? That is one of the items that they have a PD overlay exception from, they being the Ladera folks. But this, this code amendment, it applies to the whole town, not just Ladera, right? So they, they have a different language for that.
Yeah, I'm just speaking for the town, not.
Right. Actually, Chad and I were talking about this, this afternoon. It's like, is that what the town wants into the future? We didn't tackle that, right? We didn't tackle that right now, but that's a good question. Like even Town Hall has metal on the side and it, as a accent material or sometimes as a primary material, it, it works fine. But that made its way into the code at some point. And that might not be a bad idea to rethink how that is worded.
So I did read it correctly, that technically this wasn't allowed.
Right, yeah, that's the way I read it. And that's a good example as to why we need to constantly look at our code and maybe amend it here and there because sometimes it doesn't say what we want it to.
Yay, I read it correctly.
Yes.
Okay, then 5.3.4.3, table. Let, let you get there. You there?
Yes, which would, okay, 5, 5, 3, 4, 3, which one?
Well, there's a few of them. So A3, just to say, I think that's a good addition, adding that in. You know, putting that in was good. But the, the question there is, that really contemplates glazing. And, you know, what about alternatives? Did, did you consider that, like just articulation instead of a window that, you know?
Right, and if you read that, so that's the, the sec- the subsection three, right? Which used to just say 30% glass. And then we're adding this sentence that says, where the interior operation or program of a building warrants screening from a street, facade, architectural treatments creating a desirable pedestrian experience may be substituted for clear glass as approved by the director, such as closed display windows or opaque glass.
Yeah, I guess I keyed in the such as. But in, in general, it means some other articulation would be considered as well. Okay, good, thanks.
And then it, again, it gives the director the authority to interpret, you know, what, what is acceptable or not in that case.
And then same table, B.1.6. It, it mentions, uh, like two materials required. And, you know, I don't know, just the, the devious person in me is, you know, if I did like two inches on the bottom of a column, does that, you know, is there percentages that are needed? Or do you think that's just complexity that's not needed?
Well, so to, to back up, if you, in the context, this, there's six items and a, an applicant can choose three or more of those six items. So item number six is one out of three things they have to, if they choose item six, is one out of three things, minimum three things that they have to choose off of that list. And, and this is, this is under the residential standards of six, six or fewer units, right? But this is, yeah, that's a good question, you know, like if it's just two inches of stucco, does that count? I mean, we would, again, that, I think it goes back to the, the director being able to either be lenient or more strict to say, well, that doesn't really count.
Well, that, and a few weeks ago, we spent an hour and a half debating how much of a particular material.
Well, that's a good, good question. We, we certainly didn't clarify that in that language.
I think once you get into the percentages, you're going to see a lot of similar designs. And so this provides some flexibility to be creative and, and then we can make sure it meets the intent.
Can I jump in for one second here? When we hear fairness and nothing personal, when somebody says, that's a good question. The, often, the first time I say that, somebody says, that's why I asked it. That's certainly why you asked it. Do we have, do we have a weakness here? Do we have something that does need to be tidied up? That, that in, as we move forward here with this particular item, do we have this, and going back to the other thing that, that Troy said, Marty raised, and that's why Marty's, that's why you all are good at this. Not just him, but parsing these details. Do we have something that needs to be tidied up here?
I believe we, I believe we don't. It, it gives the director, myself, or whoever is in the future, the ability to have adopted alternative standards. So there's a trade off of being precise, 30%, 5%, whatever, versus something comes in and it's off by point zero, you know, whatever, we're in round two, making an applicant either revise those plans or going through a variance process or a waiver process. So there is, I think this provides enough flexibility where there could be that as opposed to having a percentage. Now, in Marty's example, I don't think anybody would design a two inch strip of stucco. It's probably pretty difficult to do and expensive to do. But again, I think it gives us the flexibility to do that. Again, the flip side of, of having a number or standard, sometimes this gets pretty hard to hitting that exact number, depending on the facade or what you're looking at. So it does give us some flexibility with that.
If you're good, I'm good on that, just.
But it, it's just, it's one of those where I get it, you know, the, the more detail you put in, the more you paint yourself into a corner. But also, if we don't define it, then we're left arguing that I met the standard. Well, I don't think you did. Well, we did, no, we didn't.
Rebuttal.
We're doing that now with, with our home builders on the current standards. And that's why we're bringing these forward is because they're, they're not clear. And so there's a lot of discussion about block diversity, you know, which side of the facade needs additional enhancements? What, what constitutes a, a change? Right now, we don't have very good guidance. And so again, this is a much better system to work from than what we currently have.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it, it is, no debating that. I mean, one of the things I would encourage you to consider on that is, especially like this one, you know, if, if you're looking at different materials on a facade, I, me personally, I think it might be a, a good thing to consider, just like minimum percentages. You know, something that gives them a guideline that each one should be at least this. I mean, one can be primary, but then the others have a minimum of, of this. And that gives us the basis to, you know, I, I guess, a better foundation, a better basis to, when it comes to a site plan, to tell somebody that, no, you know, we, we don't agree and there's at least something to back that up.
See a lot of heads nodding over there. Must have agreed, next.
This one's just a, don't wanna spend a bunch of time, it's residential. It's just, the garages, as I read that, I thought it was a little bit strange. They, for front facing, it said that there, you know, if there's like a third stall or a different stall, it has to be recessed at least three feet. That would, that would be difficult in some situations, right? If it was like a patio home, you probably don't have that kind of room.
Probably wouldn't have three garage bases.
It's gotta be a pretty wide lot to even allow three garage doors because we have a, you know, a minimum amount of the lot frontage that can be a garage door in the first place. So it's gotta be a pretty wide lot to allow them facing the street. Now, you can have a third garage door that faced, you know, that's perpendicular on smaller lots. But, um, yeah, that's a fairly rare circumstance. But we're saying, and that, in that particular code language is like, when that happens, that third one's gotta, can't be at the same, you know, plane as the, the main garage doors. It's gotta be at a different, a different plane to kind of break that massing up. It is probably a pretty rare circumstance that that would ever happen. When it does, we'd sure like it to be articulated a little, you know, more, a little more along these lines.
Okay. I'll skip that one. It made sense at the time when I wrote it down, but it doesn't now.
I, I gotta piggyback if I can on your garage.
Go ahead, piggyback, and then I'm gonna, we're gonna go on down the line here.
I, I just, and I brought this up before, I'm still very concerned that you're limiting the amount, you're changing it from 40% to 50%. I mean, there's, there's homes in the communities that we don't have, especially with the three car garage, that has 50% or.
We're going down from 50 to 40, you mean? No, that, I mean, that's what we're.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, you're going down, yeah, I'm sorry.
Is there a question in there?
Yeah, I'm saying, are we, are we further limiting that? And I thought when we talked about this, is it was on lots of a specific size?
Yeah, the magic number is a 50 foot lot would allow a two car, a standard two car garage at 40%.
Right, but I didn't see that limitation here. I, I thought we were gonna put in there that, that this applied if the lot sizes were of this size.
Yeah, it's a, it's sort of a default. By saying 40%, that means larger lots that are larger than 50, if you just do the math. But you have to have a pretty wide lot in order to do more than a two car garage by doing that.
I'm, I'm gonna be biased on this one because my house, for example, which is right over here around the corner, I've got a three car garage and I don't have 50%. That's a, a not garage, more of it's garage than it is on the face. And it fits in that lot just fine. So I'm sure there's a lot of others within that same area, well, that whole area, that's how they're being built. So this one still concerns me. My house is the same way.
Yeah.
That is a question, is, is that, I mean, from a staff perspective, we, we think we should maybe make that only allowed on pretty wide lots. We're, you know, we work for you, so.
I think the implication here, the concern is.
What do you guys want?
The concern is, and there's been some noted evidence of this, that the developers won't wanna build here, they won't like this. Is it being too, too restrictive, I believe is what he's getting at.
Yeah, um, so I, I think we.
Everybody wants to chime in on this one, Logan first.
We did survey other communities. I know Greeley has the same standard, so it's, it's 40%. The intent behind this standard is to not allow the garage to dominate, right? That primary facade, the front of your home. And then anything for smaller, narrower lots, they shouldn't probably have front loaded garages. They should be alley loaded. So it kind of just makes that happen by default with, with this 40%. It's like if you go narrower, it has to be alley loaded. You're not gonna be able to have that, that garage front loaded.
Carolyn, let, let's, what were you gonna add then? We're not done with this one, Bonnie means.
This is a policy matter. If you guys don't wanna go from 50 to 40, you know, so that's staff's recommendation. They're looking at the aesthetics of wanting to have a house forward pedestrian view. If you guys from your personal experiences feel like, I feel like 50%, what we currently have is enough pedestrian forward and we like what we have, that's why we're bringing it to you. This is a perfect policy decision and you guys could definitely conditionally approve it saying, let's keep it at 50.
Well, here's how I would come at it. I mean, I'm all, I'm all for the front not having to, the appearance of all garage. I'm all, if you stop right there, absolutely. I'm just wondering if this is not too drastic a change. And maybe the way to come at this is, how many of existing homes approximately would this have eliminated in, in the current modern build out of Timoth's residential?
Yeah, that's a difficult question because every subdivision has a PD overlay. So it just complicates the matter. I can't even tell you, like, I wouldn't be able to review it with our base standards and, and tell you the answer.
Phil, I would recommend that we don't change this particular one and leave it at the 50%.
I, I would agree. I think if you did a quick survey, drive around the neighborhood and counted how many three car garages are, are existing out there right now, there's a lot of them. And I would guess every three car garage house has 50%. Or more.
Yeah, there's other purposes as well, right? To activate the streetscape, to reduce the amount of impervious driveway coverage on the lot. There's drainage impacts. I mean, so, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of benefits as well to.
The builders are doing some tricks there, right? And I don't know how yours is, but I have a two lane pull up into my three car garage. And all they did was build a little loop out so that I could get out, but it goes into that. So from a street standpoint, I only look like I have a two car garage from a drive up. So they, they can get around, or they've gotten around on that. I, I would fall on my sword on this one. I think it needs to stay at the 50.
Well, we certainly wouldn't want that to happen. The, is there, okay, you know, I, I'm a, my longer time colleagues are all about compromise. Is there any compromise here? Anything which, I'm not readily seeing it, but is there wiggle room here, staff? I,
I mean, that's one of the things we have to, every building permit, we have a, a plot plan review. And a good part of our staff spends a good part of every week doing plot plan reviews. And they check against things such as block diversity and garage door frontage and the amount of width of the driveway at the property line and, and things of that nature. And they'll be reviewing some of these new standards, such as like on a corner lot, there's two primary facades on this proposed language that they, you know, they've gotta have treatment on a, on a residential corner lot to make sure that the side is as primary as so, as well as the front. So we review all of those things multiple times every week on every building permit that comes in. And so that's the question, is, is that, is that what you want us to check for or not? You know, we're, we're proposing that would be a good idea, but like Carolyn said, it's a policy question.
All right, so I'm gonna, in order to move this along, I'll make a suggestion and my colleagues will tell me if I'm all wet. Is there, if we pulled this out for the time being, this, just this, this one so far?
50 versus 40% you mean?
Yeah, we just pulled, pulled this particular thing out for the time being. What? Whatever it is, whatever it is. If we pulled it out, is there some, uh, some metric you could come back at? I, I understand the, here we got the darn, a darn PD overlay circumstance again. But it seems to me that if, uh, this would have prevented much of the three, most of the three car, many three car garages that are in existence right now. Perhaps my two, perhaps my two colleagues, you see where I'm going with this? Is there something you could, something you could come back with? And we can reconsider this, not to say we're rejecting it, we're not to say we're certainly not accepting it for the moment, but come back with something, perhaps a, a compromise or some metric that indicates maybe we did go too far. Would that, colleagues, is that?
That makes a lot of sense. And perhaps to build that into the discretion that we talked about a little bit earlier with Marty's issues.
So we definitely want to like move this forward to council intact with a percentage for the garage. So we can certainly look at lots to see, okay, would they fit this regulation? It sounds like Renzo's house, the garage is offset. And so you, you just see the two, so it probably would meet this. And then maybe we go from, we decide if we do 40 or 50 based on our research, does that?
Wait, wait a second, there's something you just said, and I apologize, may I?
Please.
That I think changed it, may change it a little bit.
Okay.
My garage is offset, it goes in a foot and a half, the third car garage. So are we saying that this is the non offset part? I, I'm, now I'm confused.
No, sorry. I thought your like third garage was oriented a different direction. Okay.
There's some that turn ninety degrees.
The driveway, the driveway, not the garage.
The downside is that when they turn them ninety degrees like that, it limits the size of a car you can drive into your driveway and into your garage. You can't put a, a pickup truck in your garage.
Renzo, do you know how wide your lot is? That might help with this thought process.
It's a five thousand foot lot. It's a, it's a narrower lot.
So commissioners, I just recommend that you, if you're not satisfied with forty percent, I'd just recommend we stick with the fifty percent. We're updating our comprehensive plan. Big picture, there'll probably be a lot more land use code changes and so we can come back where we could craft a new zoning district. I'm just thinking off the top of my head, to deal with smaller lots. It can kind of address the, the fifty, forty percent. Like Logan said, that, you know, when you get those smaller lots, really ideally, you don't want a streetscape that's just a bunch of driveways down your street. You want alley loaded. I know that creates some challenges because people like their backyards, so you don't get as much backyard with an alley loaded product, but you know, really, when we come forward, one of the goals that I hope is identified through this process is to try to create some more diversity of our housing types. So yes, it's great that we have some larger lot, three car garage, X, Y, and Z, but I know myself personally, I don't know how my kids can afford to buy a house anywhere in this country. So I, I'm hopeful that there's ways that we can start looking at some different templates to allow for some different starter homes and what have you. Maybe not what we're looking at, but with these smaller lot sizes. I do know that we've had some developers approach me about some narrower lot slices and how to deal with that. So something we could look at.
Well, I think I like that a lot, Scott. I, I think we're saying the same thing. And we're also seeing, I might, it might add, and I've, I said this before, when we talked about design standards at a meeting just for guidance. And I heard at the public comment that what we have is boring and we don't have a lot of diversity. I, I happen to think we do. We have a lot of products that are rear loaded. We have a lot of narrower lot, things already. Particularly to trailside comes to mind, a lot of nice, a lot of products in there that I, I find attractive. So i- if you all are comfortable with that, I think this would be a good idea and I, I agree with what Scott's saying. We'll stick with that for the time being. Doesn't mean this is a living document, our land use code as proof of what we're doing here tonight ad nauseam, it seems sometime.
So is that a condition?
Yes, I think when you go to approve it, it'd be a motion to approve with changing the fifty percent limitation on the front facade for garages to afford.
We're not.
Forty percent back to the fifty percent, not making that change.
Okay. Well, and, and I would ask, is, are we just talking about the forty to fifty percent or the entire new text in that?
No, just the forty to fifty, just the numbers, just those numbers.
That's it, I believe. That's just.
Well, so I, I had some concerns about some other parts of that paragraph. So the, the, it's requiring that recessed garages are three feet behind the most primary plane of the first main floor. Um, and I drove around and looked at other houses and there's a lot of houses that the garage is, is the most forward part and they make a courtyard that's recessed inside. So you look at that in Harmony Club and you see that in Timoth Lakes. And, and maybe the intent is to get rid of those kinds of designs. But I would say this would have prevent, if this code was in place at that time, those designs would not have been approved. So I guess I, I would say that there's other concerns about how these garages are described that maybe going back and looking at what some of the current designs that were within the last five years approved, would they have been eliminated based on this code?
But if I understood what you said correctly, the, the courtyard areas wouldn't be the, the primary.
Right. And so in section two, A, I, I two and three, that, that kind of design is not listed there.
Troy?
So just looking at this whole section, just to reiterate the, so the green text is text that was already in the code that was just moved location.
Right.
So that, that opening sentence in item two that says garages is the, is the category and it says homes, not garages shall have emphasis on residential streets. The intent is that garages not dominate the home facade and or streetscape, alley excess garages are encouraged. So then we added the blue text to, to help with that goal, that the opening sentence already was in the code to kind of give us clarity of what we were trying to accomplish. So I guess that's back to the policy question. Is that what we should be trying to accomplish? And staff thinks so, but if, you know, if the board or if the commission doesn't think so, then, you know, that's, that's up for discussion tonight.
Well, Janelle raises a good question. I, is that, there I go saying good, that's a good question. I used it in a different context, so. My defense. Commissioners thoughts? What do you, what do you think about this aspect of this particular one?
You know, I think that there's a lot of, a lot of detail in here that seem to be promoting different goals. And maybe, maybe rather than focus so much on the detail, if we step back and, and, and ask ourselves, what are we trying to, to do here? What are our goals? From my standpoint, having all these design guidelines are great because we're gonna have a higher quality timeth in the future. On the other side, are we really adding all of these details to promote higher density? More alley loaded houses, fewer three car garages? If we're doing that, we need to be more transparent and say, yes, that's what we want. We want more small, higher density lots so that we can, we can have more affordable housing. Or we, we, we really are, are changing the, the way we built over the last five years and having fewer three car garages and fewer impermeable driveways. I, I don't think that, that we're being really clear with that. As I read through this from a residential, there's some things that are good, higher quality, but there's some things that are, maybe it's gonna slow development because it's gonna make things more expensive. And I think that some developers may shy away. I think the commercial is equally issue. A lot of this is, is, is gonna make commercial more expensive. And I think that the, the profit and loss for commercial property is a lot tighter than some residential. And it's gonna discourage some commercial development here in, in town, some of which we may want. It's going to tend to favor large developments where they have the money and they can do all this stuff. But a small business trying to build a, a car wash, that's not gonna happen. Because they're never gonna meet some of these standards. It's gonna cost too much. So I think we really need to step back and think, what is the goal? And, and be transparent about it. If we are gonna press for higher density, more apartment buildings, let's say it. But if we're gonna continue with single family housing, the way Timoth has been built for the last five or more years, we need to, we're making a change here and I don't think we're telling people about it. And I think that's a, that's something that it, it's maybe bigger than us. It's going to our elected officials.
So Commissioner Tom, I don't want you to mistake my statements. I mean, I think there's some competing values that you pointed out, some impervious surface. We're talking about, Troy mentioned the, the dominance of the streetscape. We don't want that to be a garage door. That's the current code. We are in conversations with developers, builders, how to interpret that code. So we're trying to put those standards in there. So do not take my statement about affordability and diversity of housing, because when you get to that lot size, those numbers become harder to make things work.
Right.
And so with our comprehensive plan update, there is an opportunity with the community engagement that maybe that would be an outcome of that process. It would identify a smaller lot stand, that we could develop some standards that are appropriate with that. So the intent here is really looking at the, the design character of a streetscape and how that garage interfaces with the, the garage door interfaces with your building facade. So yes, that has impacts on costs. Yes, it has impacts on impervious surface. Yes, it has impacts on the size of your house, the size of the lot, affordability. I mean, that's the challenge with mini zoning. I mean, zoning is very interrelated and standards impact. And they can have a lot of different interplay there, so.
Will these same design guidelines apply to rural residential as compared to our ones?
Yes, they, they, where the asterix is, is where was zoning districts, they apply. So they would apply in rural, rural estate.
I mean, most likely a rural estate's gonna have a really big lot and so they could have a three car garage real easily because the forty percent would be.
They just have to have the front of the house be more than fifty percent and, and a smaller percentage for the garage. You have to put the garage around the back. Or, no, you could have it perpendicular to the house. Perpendicular, which would indirectly say you can't park a pickup truck in your garage. I can park three of them in my garage. You're pretty good.
So let me try and, let me try and mediate slash rein this in a little bit. I don't, Tom, to your point, I don't know that we're, staff is recommending entirely changing the vision of Timoth in one fell swoop. Is that safe to say we're, we're not, we're not, this is perhaps not as drastic.
This has nothing to do with density.
What, what's that?
Yeah, these, these requirements have nothing to do with density.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
So this is really the interaction of the building with the street, right? We're trying to be, get more active, more front porches and encourage front porches from happening. So you can see that in neighborhoods like Observatory Village or Harvest Park in Fort Collins. So there's kind of that recess and you have that with production homes. Now, in a place like Harmony Club, those are custom homes. You're gonna have a PD overlay and there's going to be different design standards for those homes. So this is just kind of your production housing, you know, your Hartford Homes. That's what we're trying to like, here's a minimum standard for that.
I wanna circle back. I don't wanna do a disservice to Janelle's concern. I wanna circle back to that. I don't believe we adequately spoke to it, did we?
No, I.
Just to, hang on a second. Let, just staff, did, was that a valid concern? Was that similar to the fifty percent, forty percent? Did we, did we address it to your satisfaction?
I mean, it seems, it kinda goes back to that overarching question of what are we trying to accomplish? And I, I think we're looking at that, you know, the green text here and trying to add the blue text to give clarity to how to get to the green text. Green text being what was already in the code. The blue text being the new language. So and that, if you recall, like a month ago, when we came with all this first draft of this, we said, are we going too far? And the response we got is, well, only if there's no flexibility. So the suggestion was allow the planning director to give an alternative compliance when it makes sense at the discretion of the planning director. And that was, I think, what you all told us a month ago in response to, are we going too far? You all said probably not so long as planning director can back off as necessary. And so maybe that's the answer, or maybe it, it's a, it's a closer look that you're looking at it now that maybe we should dive into.
And I'm not, I'm not asserting we're going too far necessarily. I, for one, I happen to like giving the community development director office the discretion on things like this. I wouldn't say that with everything, but on this, I do think that the question is to our newest colleague at the end, did we reasonably answer this? If not, let's keep looking at this.
Um, so I think what Logan said about the PD overlay can make exceptions to it. I think that's, that's a good point. I, you know, I think, and I, and I do agree with being more prescriptive with the language because to be able to point to the language and say, this is, you're not meeting this requirement makes it better for everybody. But there was just some details of this that I felt were changing what was being approved. And so I just wanted to make sure that that's, that was what we wanted to do, rather than, you know, just to leave it out. So I, I think my, my question was answered on that. And, but I, but I wanted to know, you said you wanted just to change the, the forty percent back to the original fifty percent. And I wanted to clarify, did we wanna leave in all of the blue text? Or, or modify it?
Commissioners, is that, is that what we're talking about here?
That's what I was recommending.
Okay, is that out of the question? Nothing's really out of the question. Is that not prudent to include that in, we're leaving that for the time being till another time?
No, I'm sorry.
As, as, as part of the condition?
No, I, I was saying, leave, leave or approve the document as they have. The only change is not allow that fifty or that forty percent be changed to fifty. Everything that they're recommending.
We've plowed that ground already. That's, that's a given, that that's, as we go forward here eventually. That's a given. The question is, are we, is there other related elements of this that need to be considered in that same vein? No? Okay. All right. All right, let's move on to their questions.
Well, so the, this applies to all of the residential, including the multifamily home, correct? So the, the block diversity portion of that, does everybody have to meet every point on the block diversity? Or is there just to have diversity within those points? So do they have to have massing and do they have to have three different exterior clad materials and, and all of that? And this is in five point three, point four, point four.
Let me do some technical things, I guess.
He's asking me to do this, this slideshow full screen again, let's see.
Because my concern with that section was that with, with, you know, thinking about affordability and that you have townhomes or duplexes. If you are requiring four distinct models of every townhome that's built in, within a, in a neighborhood, that, that, that might drive the affordability of it or the cost of it up.
Yes, this, the, the answer is yes, it would apply.
Okay.
And so that's, that's part of the question. Currently, it has only applied to single family detached residential. And townhomes have been sort of a loophole as staff has sort of thought, but maybe that was intentional, maybe not. We, we were trying to kind of close that loophole and say, if you've got a sixplex next to another sixplex, they ought to look different. If you've got four, sixplexes in a row, you know, they ought to not just be two different varieties. And so, but same with houses.
It wouldn't seem that that would have any impact on the affordability. It would seem that that would track with our existing single family home.
I agree.
Well, you agree? That that, that alone isn't going to impact affordability by requiring a sixplex or fourplex next to another to have a different color.
It depends on the, the builder and how many, you know, different, different sixplex designs they have in their palette of of choices. I mean, some, some builders would have a lot to choose from and some wouldn't. So I guess, I mean, it, it may or may not be more affordable, but it, you know. So I guess, I mean, it, it may or may not be more affordable, but it, you know, depending on the developer, developers that have a, a, a good variety probably wouldn't make a huge effect on.
Certainly seem prudent to keep somebody from wandering into the wrong home.
It might help with that.
Just trying to, it's because it gets late a little bit of levity here, thanks. Not working very well, is it? Janelle, do you, is that, is that what you were getting at? Because I'm not.
So like, if you look at Timmef Ranch, on the east side of it, there's the townhomes and they all have the same footprint. There's some different cladding and stuff on, on them. And so that's why my question was, do you have to meet all, all six of these requirements to have differences? Or, or is there a mix and match?
Troy? Let me, let me just refresh my memory on this language. Let me read through this really quick again.
Oh, I'm, there is a typo. I noticed there's two number fours.
Two number fours, alright, sure enough.
And so I guess my comment on this section would be that, that maybe townhomes have a different set of diversity requirements.
Is this something better to come back later on?
Well, I, I, I seem to, I, I know where you're getting at and I, I thought I remembered something that I'm not reading in here, which is, it seemed like you had to choose a certain number of these six different things. You didn't have to do all of them, but I'm not seeing that it says that.
Then.
I think that's the requirement under the.
Okay, alright, that's maybe where I'm getting that from.
You know, if there's not any, if we don't have clarity on this, it sounds like we need to
Right.
move on, add this to the condition. Anybody else over there?
I guess how I read it is we, they need four distinct models and they need to have significant variation. And this is how you can accomplish the variation. So the porches need to be different. There needs to be different massing, different cladding materials. The finestration is different. So that would contribute to the variety.
So there's not a specific number of those that you have to choose. It's like you said, mix and match.
Right, it's like a menu of this is how you would accomplish the variety, the variation.
So is there some verbiage that you could add to this to, to provide that clarity without?
I think that would take a half a sentence, you know, to, to add clarity that the variation can be accomplished by a combination of any of these elements and maybe we could.
Carolyn, is that a simple, hopefully a simple fix for this?
It's a simple fix. So instead of saying based on variation in each of the following business building elements, you could replace each with base in, upon variation in or variation considering the following building elements.
Yes.
So would replace in each of the with, in each of with considering the vulnerability elements.
All right, how we, how's that sound down there at the end?
Yeah, that's, I, I think that, that helps clarify that. And, and I guess one more on that section at the top. About the third sentence in, it says the same residential model with the same architectural style. And I was kind of struggling with that because you guys had defined it where it wasn't defined before. And it didn't quite fit the context of it because when you're talking about architectural styles of Tuscan versus modern, you can't, you don't want to make them change that, that group of, of category, but you want them to be distinct from each other, is that right?
Yeah, we've struggled with that a lot in trying to figure out what is different enough when it's, you know, when we're side by side and we're saying what's, what are we trying to accomplish? And so we, we came up with this definition of architectural style. It's a pretty long one, but it goes to, it's not, it's not only the difference between modern or colonial or craftsman, but it could be that, but it's also some other things. So we're, we're trying to say in a pretty broad description of like, what, what could be different enough side by side or across the street, directly across the street or four in a row. And so that's, I guess that's part of the feedback we're, we're seeking. But as we move forward is like, is, is that definition of architectural style that we came up with, is that sufficient? Or is that, should we wordsmith that anymore than, than we did already, I guess?
Yeah, and I think it, in the other places where you use it in the document, I think it makes sense where you say it needs to, the material shows and need to fit the architectural style so that you're not picking log cabin for, you know, some thing that doesn't make sense. But I guess I, if I were to change this sentence, I would just say, I would eliminate the, the with the same architectural style here and just say that the same residential model shall not be placed directly side by side. And, and I don't know if that gives you enough differentiation, if that, if you'll have developers come back and say, well, it's different by two inches. So I, or, or I would say the other way you could address it is to take out of the definition, take out that list of historical styles and, and not make it reliant on it.
Yeah, agree?
Well, that was an either or, so.
Yeah, that was.
Which is?
Yeah, do we take out the reference to modern Craftsman Prairie, Cape Cod, Tuscan, contemporary Mediterranean, colonial Tudor, mid-century modern, et cetera, in the definition? And just stick with everything else that kind of describes how, what is different in architecture versus do we just strike the term architectural style out of the, the language? Five point three, point four, point four, block diversity A. Now, that's black text, so that's already in there, but we're just trying, we're trying to define what that means. So it seems like it'd be more appropriate to, rather than to strike the term architectural style that's already in the code, to modify our definition, maybe not to refer to these historical styles, but more the description of like, what's, what's different about an architectural style without referring to those. So, so my recommendation, just on the cuff, if planning, rest of the planning staff agrees with me, would be just to strike the, the, in the definition, the reference to the modern Craftsman Prairie, Cape Cod, Tuscan, contemporary Mediterranean, colonial Tudor, mid-century and modern. Does that sound reasonable to just strike that? I would agree with you though, that's a little vague. It was very good comments, yeah.
I think, yeah, since it wasn't defined before, it, it, it didn't, it kind of could be used in multiple places in the code, but since they're kind of being used in different contexts that you could even, I don't know if you could come up with even a new word that would try to, to make things more distinct, which you, which you did in the, in the, in the block diversity on the different ways that you can achieve block diversity. I kind of think that describes it better than the architectural styles. So I, I, I guess I'm just bringing it up, I don't have a preference.
That was a term that the code uses and we were like, well, what does that mean? It means something different to everybody, so maybe we should kind of pin that down.
Commissioners, you're concurring with what seemed to be hopefully moving towards a meeting of the mind on this one? Do you concur with what you're hearing? Can you, we?
To strike it from the definition?
Strike those historical references out of that definition that would be fine from a staff perspective.
Alright, that's a good one. Uh, what else, Commissioners?
So are these last two conditions or just go do's?
Yeah, Carol.
Yeah, I'll just restate them all at the end. So I'm just taking notes. I'll restate all the changes you're asking for and it'll just be a motion to approve with the changes discussed, but I'll go through all the changes so that we can just have them be a motion to approve with those changes.
Okay, we're gonna, that, that would be helpful. I won't leave anything to chance. Okay, other comments, questions? I'm done. I'm really done. So we'd be remiss, and I, perhaps I'd be remiss and it falls to me, I suppose. And this is just my personal opinion, is not circle back to Ladera's expressed concerns. I don't know if this, you know, I find our staff, they're, they're very thoughtful, very proactive. Certainly, you know, I think they, they're very diligent in trying to get to a certain end result. All these land use code changes and the fact that, you know, I heard Will at the very outset, when he said is, their view is that this is a public-private partnership. But it's, it, it's, to me, it's not feeling like that a lot of the time here. Uh, we, we see the letter, we pulled item seven C. There was a request to pull this item as well. You know, I'm, I'm all about compromise and personally, I professionally, it was always about people sitting down in a room and being able to compromise and come to some agreement. And, but I'm at least smart enough to say I, I don't know what I don't know. And what I, what I do know is that some of this, this pushback is above my pay grade. It's, but it starts to feel like it gets in the realm of, of attorneys and that's not good either. So I don't have a, I don't have an answer. I do find that, and I'm certainly going to support with the conditions that Carolyn will, will restate here for us, I do support moving forward with these design standards. I, I, I don't find, I think we reasonably, if not wholly, addressed some of the concerns that, that were read in the letter tonight. But just, it sometimes just doesn't seem like we're on the same page that we should be on here. And I don't think that's good. And that's not, that's not picking sides here, it's just an observation. And I just don't understand sometimes why we, we can't compromise on these things. So anyway, that's, that's enough about that, Commissioners. I don't know, maybe somebody will slap me on after the meeting's over here, but I, I wanted to, to get that said. So with that, if anybody has any other comments or wants to comment further, not to prolong what I said, but anybody else? Okay, all right, with that, Carolyn have at it there and we will see if that meets everybody's wishes here.
Okay, I have the following modifications and so we can have a motion to approve with the following modifications. And the first one is to keep the fifty percent as a limit for the front facade garage. Fifty percent of the front facade of residential building can be the garage. So that's not making the change from fifty to forty in section three, five dot three, dot four, dot three, dot B, dot two, dot B. Okay, the second one is in section five point three, point four, point four, point A, changing in each of to considering. And then in the definition of architectural style, we're striking the historical references, which would mean deleting the sentence that reads, sometimes architectural styles are described as historical styles, such as modern Craftsman Prairie, Cape Cod, Tuscan, contemporary Mediterranean, colonial Tudor, Tudor, mid-century, modern, et cetera. But an architectural style does not necessarily have to be associated with one of the aforementioned historical styles. So we're striking that sentence.
Yeah, I'm looking to my two, our two alternate Commissioners who've earned their keep certainly tonight. Does that capture what Renzo started, Janelle took it from there? Does that, that get her done?
Uh, so, so I continue to strike, the intent is that there are many architectural styles, some are which are based on historical styles, some are which are new styles, but in all cases, oh wait, maybe. Never mind, I think, I think the way you read it was fine, okay.
All right, Commissioners, then we're, we're, we're recording, aren't we? We are, this is all documented, the.
This should be being recorded and live streamed.
Okay, I think you did a swell job of capturing that, by the way. So, all right, Commissioners, with that, I need a motion to approve the, I need a motion on design standards land use code amendment, item seven B, taking off on Carolyn's statement, capturing the conditions.
I, I make a motion to accept the design standards land use code amendment seven B as written with the changes or modifications that Carolyn just read.
I have a second.
Second?
We move in seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed.
Nay.
Very good, the motion carries on a four, zero vote. Four, one, I'm sorry, four, one. There wasn't a Freudian slip, or maybe it was. Does, does Marty's objection, does that need, does he need to state a reason so that when this goes forward? I would, then by all means, I, I won't look to staff, I'll look to you.
So mine is, I agree with everything. I don't agree with changing the proposed forty percent back to fifty. I understand what you're, I, I believe I understand what you're trying to do with that and I agree with that. So I agree with everything, I just don't agree with that change.
And understood and I believe we'll get another crack at this, as we will, as this, given this living document that it is. All right, so the motion, the motion was moved, approved on four, one vote. Scott, is there something you wanted to add about this? Okay, I thought maybe, okay. All right, with that, we move on. If nobody has objections, move on to number eight, reports. Quickly, Scott?
Thank you, Commissioners, I have a couple things for you. We are kicking off our comprehensive plan process coming up. I am tasked with trying to schedule a time for everybody and you're one of my target audience. So they're going to be here from Tuesday, April twenty eighth through Thursday, May first. And I am tentatively looking at that Tuesday evening, since you guys tend to mark Tuesday nights out for your time to contribute to the community. There's a opportunity from four, I believe I have, four thirty to five thirty to meet with our consultants. So I will send out an email and just giving you a heads up to see if that's a time that works for all of you. You don't all have to be there, there'll be other opportunities for engagement with them. But if that time doesn't work for all of you, then I'll try to find another time. So just wanted to give you a heads up on that. Another question to ponder, just in conversations with the start of these meetings. Be interested to hear if you're interested in moving it to five thirty rather than six. Again, happy to shoot me an email and let me know what your thoughts are, but that's all I have for my report, thank you.
Thanks, I encourage you to take advantage of these, every, the comprehensive plan, having gone through two of these, this is probably the most interesting thing that we can do. It's, it, it is, huh? It, it, it is, taking nothing away from anything else that might be interesting to you. But this is, this is where, this is where it is, if you will. I didn't say where it's at, you can't end with a preposition, right, Carolyn? But I do encourage you to take advantage of these. But I do encourage you to take advantage of these. The only thing I have to add is, uh, excellent event on Saturday. Appreciate those of you who were able to come by. Staff did another great job. Our event staff continues to amaze me. Uh, I think clearly, uh, the, the biggest hallmark of this town is the events that we put on for the public. Other, other, oh, um, next meeting now, this is our second meeting of the month. Next meeting would be April or May 5th, 6th. Uh, we are, we do have right now planning on having something on agenda. Is anybody not able to make that meeting?
I'll be there.
Unknown right now, I may be farming.
Okay, anything else for the good of the order? All right, with that, we are adjourned.